Alright, so at this point, I want to report that there is, uh, nothing, excuse me, if there's interruption here, no, you're gonna have to exit this person please. No interruption in the city council.
Not without my permission.
That's cool, we're gonna exit, exit out.
Not without my permission.
Exit out, thank you.
Thank you, stepping back again to the drop by tourist in Ballard Park, saying, "You did a great job, Mayor, you go through the heads of the governor, and then President."
Okay, alright, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, we don't have anything to report, uh, from the, uh, from the study session, so at this point I will make a motion, uh, to adjourn the study session. Make a motion. And second, any objections? See none, so move. Alright, so at this point, I'd like to, uh, open up the Ballard Park City Council regular meeting today. It's June the 7th, uh, 2017, uh, the time is 7:10. Uh, so, at this point, uh, we'll go, excuse me, we're gonna do the, the, we're gonna do the, uh, who's the council member that does it by check or we'll do the in-location?
Oh, pass rejection?
Oh, pass floors, okay, come on up, please. I don't see him. Oh, no, it's okay. Alright, which will be followed also by a flag. Please stand up here.
It's great. Gracious God, we are thankful today for the privilege you give us to live life, and to live life together here in the city of Ballard Park. Uh, we're mindful, Lord, of the citizens that we journey with in this area, Lord. We're grateful for recent graduations at high schools, promotions from middle school, and all those who have served as part students of the city. Lord, pray for our council today, Lord, and all those in the public who will speak, God, help us. Lord, be mindful that we represent each other, God, that we're striving for truth, Lord, and to, to, uh, to live for you, God, that we may bring peace to the city, and may the city prosper and all that. Bless your, uh, bless me upon our mayor and all of our council, in his name we pray. Amen.
Alright, thank you. At this point, we're gonna place a flag, place your, um, right hand over your heart, ready, begin. Let's do the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with this flag, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with the great nation of this world. Alright, thank you, thank you very much, uh, council member pushing through, told them, anyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mayor, first of all, a month ago, I guess David Spence passed away, longtime mayor, paid expense, longtime mayor, and very active with the council of government.
David?
Uh, since, uh, so, different notices to the family, I know it's been about a month or so, but still. Uh, last week also, a longtime resident, um, Benny Montoya, that had been involved in the park, his family for many, many years. Um, and also, um, Sal Garcia, longtime resident, and also, um, member of St. John's, passed away of long battle of cancer. And also, I'd like to have, uh, in our prayers, um, the six people, um, in London, with another bomb in the back of the, or that was a bomb, give us the, uh, the car, whatever, that, 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 instead. So, for peace, first and last piece, in the word.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, I'd also like to close on behalf of a good friend of the family for many, many years, uh, Doctor, Doctor Andres Cantu, uh, who died at the age of 27, a very young decision. So our biggest condolences goes out to he, him and his family as well. Alright, so at this point, yes, council member?
I know what's going on with the topic. I congratulate all the students that, uh, graduated, uh, last week, uh, the Ballard Park High School, uh, in Saravista, uh, at, uh, in North, uh, very beautiful, several, when I attended Ballard Park High School, graduation, we followed 400 students, uh, that graduated, uh, with a number of, uh, very, very students followed, and so very emotional, very touching to see, uh, these students work so hard and be able to graduate in one, uh, to a, to another school, so I think, uh, congratulations goes out to all of them. Also, just wanna mention again that, uh, we do the medical cannabis conservation, looking for its community outreach, uh, and education, and we're currently on co-op, we have about four different workshops for the community to attend, and, uh, just to give some public people time in this process, so God, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much. This, yeah, yes.
I forgot the, uh, the council member that Jacob has mentioned, do we have a little website just to make sure that we can refer people to the dates and times and locations?
Yes, we do, it is on the website banner.
Okay, please do.
Alright, also, before I forget, I want to, I need a two-thirds, we're gonna face a very important subject, which is the approval of resolution opposing withdrawal from the Paris Climate Agreement, and so, we need the two-thirds, so at this point I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yes.
Uh, council member Rubio had requested with this item, we put on the approval of resolution opposing withdrawal from Paris Climate Agreement after the agenda came out, and so that's the need for the suspending.
Alright, so, good, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second by, uh, uh, council member Cruz Baca, no objections, see none, so, this is extremely important. Unfortunately, a person at the White House has a whole different, uh, viewpoint of that. Won't go into that.
Uh, Mayor, I also, real quick, because all the parts of our provision department has made their catalog of all the programs that we offered this summer, uh, it's a meal, out to all the residents, it's all the city hall offices, and I think it's important because I know we're looking for all this, for a lot of our youth, and a lot of programs that, uh, families have looked into to make sure we have all these for youth, for seniors, for family, so we could all look into these things, and it's also, uh, on our website, so I just wanna point it out, thank you, Mayor.
I think you also wanna welcome, uh, former chief and interim chief now, also, uh, Mr. Mike Taylor. Like I say, Dr. Dr. Taylor. Okay, so, what's that? Alright, so, alright, so, this, anyone, this call, we're gonna go into rock, also, we'll have, uh, see if there's many of them, but I forget, wanna also excuse Alejandro today.
Could you name a member? Councilmember Cruz Baca? Here, councilmember Monica Versini?
Here.
Councilmember Bigada Patiello?
Here.
Mayor Patiello, Mr. Rubio?
Present.
Are you a member of the Senate?
Present.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate that. Alright, so, yes, uh, council member?
I may need to leave the meeting early, so I'd like to ask if we can move off the council discussion related to the medians?
No, I don't have it, anyone have? Okay, so at this point, we're gonna go and make a motion?
Yes, so, I'll move to, uh, move the council discussion on the street median up.
I'll second, any objections? See none, so, alright, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just really quick, you know, we, we have embarked on this media project, and, uh, it's been going on for several months, um, there have been, you know, some questions, some concerns along the way, uh, that I've expressed, and I think, you know, a number of us have expressed, beginning with the removal of some of the beautiful trees, which, um, we've been informed that these trees were dying because of the drought, and, uh, you know, these dry conditions, so it was a preventative measure. Now, we're looking at the replacement trees, and, uh, not only that, there's also been debris, there's been, uh, the appearance of, like, disrepair along the medians. So I just wanted to hear from the community developer on, um, the replacement of these trees, the plant. There have been some palm trees that have, uh, been placed between these very large pine trees, and, uh, I wanted to check in with the council to see what your thoughts were, if we should move forward with those palms within the pines, or if we could look at more of a disentuous tree that I think would be more complimentary, um, and then perhaps look at the palm trees kind of on the end caps of these medians, or just revisit that. So, and then I also wanted to hear from you, Sam, about the timeframe, and then the time it will, will be completed, when it's anticipated to be completed.
Uh, is it? Yes, um, actually, I have prepared a slide for the meeting, it's over a lot of stuff, um, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor. First, I'd like to invite David Lopez up to assist me, David Lopez is the project manager of the project. So, uh, the first item I wanna address, because it's not in the slide, is the debris and disrepair. Um, most of that was during the demolition period of the project. Uh, yeah, so, uh, most of the debris and disrepair that you saw at the beginning of the project was, uh, we knew because that was the demolition period where we're, uh, just, uh, bringing down the trees, removing the dirt, and starting to, uh, irrigation. Uh, we've been following up on a daily basis, and I think it's much cleaner now, uh, hopefully it'll, it'll stay that way. We're gonna start, um, Ballard Park Boulevard soon.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Alright, so, I wanna talk about the, the, uh, schedule, the project schedule so far. So, uh, originally, the project was scheduled to be completed, uh, by now, by this time, it should have been done with the project, but the project has experienced several setbacks, uh, not to which that, uh, not the, well, the first setback was mainly the rain, we experienced at the beginning of that month, so. Uh, we have 16 days of rain that stopped them working, so that pushed us over a month. Um, also, we have had some city-driven modifications. There was a period where we were deciding whether to remove and keep trees, and during that period, the contractor slowed down, uh, because he had that, on his script for past, he had that work to remove the trees, so that slowed us down a little bit. And the, uh, removal of the trees had ramifications with the design of the irrigation, so we didn't remove the tree, now we have to redesign the irrigation system around it, so there was some back and forth with the contractor on that. Also, the subgrade, uh, in this, here in the city is mostly cobble and rock, so it's difficult, it's difficult for the, uh, difficult for the contractor to estimate. So he had trouble estimating, uh, with the puddles, and, uh, and trying to get through all the roots that are replaced after the demolition problem. Uh, also, there's been some, uh, unforeseen conditions on the median after 6:05, when we were digging for the demolition, we discovered that there was a whole road underneath, and we decided to remove that road, and after we estimated deeper, we found a second road, so we had to, uh, move that as well. Um, the schedule can be impacted further, and that depends on any modifications, uh, that we decide to do today. Uh, and that can either be good or bad, so I wanna talk about some of those. But, uh, before I just kinda wanna run down the, uh, the landscape architect approach to medians, so just kinda overview and, and just remind everyone what, what we're doing. The Roman Boulevard and the middle medians are corridors, uh, those are supposed to, uh, have to keep pines and remove liquid adverses, and they call for connecting the palms and do, uh, uh, the liquid adverses to be removed. Uh, so they call it a subtropical approach. Ballard Boulevard has a terranean approach, so in, in this case, we're still keeping the pines for around three miles, uh, and office, and, uh, there's also the grasses approach, and that applies mostly to Neymar Road and the service area markets. So, um, can changes be made? Uh, the, the answer is yes, we can still make changes, but that will impact the project cost, and it will impact, uh, the schedule. So if we wanna focus on, uh, replacing palms with the city tree, uh, some of the costs could be, uh, additional costs to remove the palms that we already planted, uh, the cost for the new trees, uh, modifications to the irrigation system, and additional remobilization for traffic control to be a requirement in Google. Uh, the schedule will be impacted, we will have to extend the contract time to allow for this work. So, could be some D-times on the new trees, and, uh, not that it applies to the schedule, but, uh, there might be more inconvenience to the newer driver. These are some options of deciduous trees that we can use in new palms that we choose to go in that direction. So the landscape architects have recommended, uh, Jack Aranda's, uh, tea booth, and golden medallion trees. Uh, pros using these trees would be that, uh, it fits the subtropical approach, um, for modern though. Uh, they're fast growing and colorful, so they can mesh, and, uh, these are already available, so the D-time will be shorter than this. Now, the cons would be, uh, in that, in that area where the palms are planted in between the pines, that's a cluster of five palms, so we would have to remove five palms per one tree. So we remove five palms, we'll put this industry for us. Uh, it would require modifications to the irrigation system, uh, they're not recommended to be installed in the narrow area of the medians, and they are higher maintenance compared to the palms, additional tree trimming, and cleaning up during the fall. And this will impact the schedule later too.
Can I stop here, Sam?
Absolutely.
Um, there are some, like, pine trees that are being planted, what are those trees? And are they an option instead of the palms that are being planted between the pines?
Yeah, absolutely, those are in area on the pines, they are in the, um, subtropical palette from the same region as the palms, so we can use, uh, the pines, uh, uh, to replace the palms, although the plant won't be the city's trees, or, oh, for, just, those are just natural. I don't have any order to do this, talk about any?
I, I have a question for us. Um, first of all, thank you very much, because I know that we decided on these trees about a year ago, and we had, like, a couple of presentations, and I don't think council member Garcia was there, that was during the time when she was missing some of our, our presentations or special meetings, but I do remember that we did vote for specific palettes to look a certain way. I forget the lady's name that came to speak to us in regards to that. But my question is, is that if, I know that sometimes when you plant certain trees, the roots may lift sidewalks, pavements, so forth, after so many years, if we replace the palms which are there, or which are going in there now, with some of these trees, what are the chances that in the next five years, we may be replacing sidewalks, or getting sued because a sidewalk is, is not flat? Or, um, the roots also, um, affecting the pavement on our streets?
Sure, um, the majority of the median islands do not have any hard state, like, like sidewalk or concrete, so the trees won't be affected there. Um, it could possibly lift the curb that's adjacent to the, um, to the street, and maybe, maybe that the street will, uh, so, that, that's common, uh, but we don't have any sidewalk where that condition might happen.
Yeah, just to add a little bit, um, those, uh, very old pines, uh, those tend to have resistance go deeper and, uh, not spread out as much, so they have, uh, they're not shower roots, and that's why they're able to maintain, uh, themselves during high winds.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, um, I was part of those meetings, and I do recall the palette ideas and the designs that we approved, um, but where my concern is coming from is, we never saw the actual layout for each median, and even to the same, we haven't seen the trees and the grasses, and, you know, because, again, it's, it's a larger scale project, so I understand that we can't produce rendering or anything like that. So, but now that we see, uh, these palms between the pines, and that's really where my concern is coming from, they don't, first of all, they don't complement each other, and, uh, we've also heard, every one of us has received, uh, complaints from, at least one resident stating that they don't want the palms.
I know.
Well, we, we always received an email, uh, from a resident stating that she did not want to see the palms, uh, with it, and I understand that, so, seeing that, you know, these are not complementary, um, I understand that there would be like a cluster of palms in one area with a subtropical theme, but when I see the pines next to palms, it just doesn't complement, and it looks odd. So, um, I would say, because we do have pines as part of the palette, and when we selected it, could we, and of course, this is, you know, the council, uh, discussion, but could we continue with, within the, I guess, within the, the pattern of the pine trees, keep those trees pine, so that they will be complementary, and then have the, the palms as be approved, you know, clustered for the end caps or in separate designated areas?
Uh, yes, yeah, the, the short answer is yes. In fact, there's only three locations, uh, where that condition happens, where there's small pines among, uh, small palms, among the tall pines.
Yeah, there are, there are small pines as well.
Yes, uh, so, yeah, so they're, uh, so replacing just those, those palms, uh, that's a possibility, and it'd be, uh, a lot of cost of a cost, and to, you know, try to find a new city's tree.
And I would say, I mean, if that would cause the least amount of setback for the project, then I would, I would look to, to bring in those small pines within the three areas that you just mentioned, where they were clustered as palms right now between the existing pines.
Can we see what the cost would be for, for, for removing and redoing irrigation and all that?
Absolutely.
I would like to see what the cost is going to be, because I see that there are cities, kind of, pines and great murals or whatever in between, I mean, that seems to be sort of a norm in Southern California, just sort of combine some of the succulents among palm trees, you know, which is indigenous to California now, but I, I see that in a lot of cities, it's not just Ballard Park, Irwindale, along Irwindale Avenue, uh, Plankton Drive, which is Monrovia, uh, Duarte, um, I, I see a lot of that combination, you know, so, could we see what the cost, and, and of course, how, how long will the project be delayed? Because I know that right now, I saw Roman Boulevard, they're laying down huge pipes, I guess, for irrigation, the pipes?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, absolutely, this is, we choose to, um, go this direction, we will have to go back and approach the contractor and negotiate the price and cost, and reach a change order to the contract. Um, once that is negotiated, I can bring it back and show the council if that's, if, if that's what's being requested.
And let me ask a question, so in the three areas that you mentioned where the palms are between the pines, uh, how many palms are at each one of those locations?
Uh, I don't know the total number, but there's, uh, it should be around 15, it's a cluster of five palms.
Five at each, right?
Yes.
And so, um, to, to replace those palms with the pines, I mean, do you have an estimated cost? Or you would have to check with your contractor?
Um, we can, uh, do a cost analysis based on the current median price, and, uh, negotiate on what should be the cost, uh, the cost for solving up trees. The contractor's gonna want to get compensated for.
What about transferring, because I know that these pines, I mean, clearly, these pines were part of the palette that we approved, so were the palms, but again, the question was the location of each.
Yes.
So what if, what if we were able to then transfer, you know, the pines or the palms wherever it makes sense?
That, that's certainly an option. We would, uh, first ask that, uh, you know, try to get some cost savings, we pay for the palms already that are planted, or we're about to pay for them, so we can get a cost savings, and we can just relocate them to another location, and then we just use the palm, that way.
Right.
We don't have to get rid of the palm.
Right, 'cause I, I think that what we did was we approved the palettes, but it's, again, this specific, what I'm requesting is the location, because the pines and the palms combined look very odd.
Right.
So, and I've heard it from, you know, residents, at least that one resident contacted all of us, but I've heard it from other residents as well as from, you know, others.
I'd like to see a cost analysis, if it's one resident, and, and really intuitive, I would like to see a cost analysis, because after all, those palms are very normal, they're not going to be stage dwarfed like that. I, but I would really like to see what would even take, keep transplant them, move them to another location, and where the pine, yeah.
Okay, absolutely, yeah, this, this is something we'll have to talk and negotiate with the contractor, but as soon as we have that information, I will email it to all of you.
Alright, uh, this, this vice mayor, this is Rubio. Go ahead. No, that's fine. Alright.
Okay, so, so I think, you know, those ones, you know, that might, uh, impact the, the schedule negatively, and we'll still have to find out how many days the contractor will want for that. Uh, the next item that David is gonna talk about is, uh, something that might, uh, accelerate the project, and he'll move.
And, 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 uh, for a while, it just seems that there's a lot of details that we have, you know, long discussions, can we just put a special meeting aside, there's a lot of details that were lost. Our gathering of discussion.
That makes sense.
And especially, you know, how there's a lot of changes and those costs to it, so can we just move it over so they could bring us ideas, and then we can just discuss it upstairs in the critical?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, can, can I just, um, uh, say something? Uh, this item, the maintenance strip, is critical, this is a critical item, uh, we need to make a decision on it, uh, today, uh, because the contractors were revising their schedule. Now, if we decide to go forward with the moles today with the property, uh, that would accelerate the, the schedule for sure, uh, but if we don't, then after we go and work out the DG, and that's gonna take longer, the danger is, and the longer we hold back that information from them, the more the delay.
And saying switch to mulch would also save some money, which might cover, if you have a change to the trees.
Correct, so, the trend is that, you know, cities are going to mulch, you can see the pictures here, uh, San Vina's, uh, Monrovia, China Bar, they're all using mulch, uh, to get. Now, if we go and, and actually, but there is, it's our city news, about $120,000 if we choose to just go with the mulch, we can apply that, uh, to the changes we want to do.
What color would the mulch be?
Us. I'll, I'll do it if you're going.
Okay, so, um, uh, thank you, thank you, uh, City Council, uh, Mayor, um, just to give you a quick, uh, quick, uh, overview, okay, so, this, uh, we're doing a comparison between, uh, both, uh, the decontrol organic and the mulch, so this slide kinda shares with you, uh, pros and cons of going with mulch versus DG. Uh, of course, uh, for pros, uh, we have cost savings, $120,000 if you go with the mulch. Um, and by going with the mulch, we're accelerating the project, uh, by, like, by the, uh, we're accelerating the project. Uh, both are easy to maintain, uh, the mulch and, uh, DG, and, uh, they're both aesthetically pleasing. Um, they both also comply with, uh, water, production requirements for water conservation, and also for infiltration of, of rainwater. Uh, the cons with, uh, with mulch versus DG, uh, we can, uh, there's, there'll be some erosion during heavy rains, and also, uh, mulch, uh, during the San Annas, of course, will be, uh, blown away slightly, but, uh, not too much, we don't expect too much of that, especially since we're gonna be having more of the, the shrubs and, and, uh, ground cover coming in, so that's gonna be, um, a bonus. Um, and also, uh, annually, in certain areas, we'll, we'll need to be refreshed, meaning that, uh, the, the mulch will decompose, it'll be part of, uh, the area that's saturated in both the watering, and, uh, we'll just need to bring another mulch, uh, annually, uh, in certain areas, and, um, as a project.
Okay. I think you have, is there a question on the color of the mulch?
Yes.
So you would just go with a neutral brown or?
Yeah, I would go with a, a neutral reddish brown color, um, to match, uh, the top solo. Alright, so if you can, uh, get direction on the mulch, uh, that would be great, we can move forward with the project. Uh, if we decide to go with the mulch, we can start planting shrubs in the downtown area.
Alright, so is there a specific color, is that?
Well, it's, it's the brownish color, which is, yes.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you'd go with the mulch.
I'll, I'll second. Any objections, see none? Real, real quick question, I just wanna say.
Where, where's the setting?
The mulch.
I kind of prefer the, the, I think the mulch kind of washes out after time. And we've seen in other cities that kind of things that, it has to be replaced, I think, a little more for the, for the compost rag, it just kind of, it just doesn't look smooth. Or kind of asshole the water, I always prefer that.
Well, I, I think we just voted on that.
Yes. I don't trust color instead of it just looking like sand, you know? Since we're going to be replacing and putting gunnings, you know, something to look at, more earthy looking.
Well, does this wash out for a while and how does it work? Water brings the water in. DG has also been known to, to wash out. And I had a ring that it kind of wrote into the street. It's hard to say if it'd be, if it was wrong with the mulch, it does happen.
I have seen the DG washed out and the problem with that is it's much harder to repair. The mulch is very easy for the current city staff to, to repair and they can refresh it annually, a little layer on top each year to bring the color back.
And that's going to be my question is the maintenance, you know, how will we prepare to maintain the mulch? So maybe it will be better, easier to maintain for our staff?
Yeah, it's, it's relatively inexpensive compared to DG and it's, you place it, we can replace and it's quick and it's easy to, to just maintain it. And the color will fade a little bit because of the sun, but again, that's part of its properties. And you can always change the color in certain areas if you ever choose to do so. And also the composition of it.
All right, I want to add that I did check with our maintenance staff before I considered the change. And I checked with them, they're the ones that are going to be maintaining and they both refer.
All right.
It was talking to your voting seconds.
Yes, exactly, so, for the trend.
Okay. All right, we, David was going to go through just sort of looking at, you know, for, for the interest of the same time. He said that, but he was just going to go through a short talk about what, what we're going to expect in the next few weeks.
Can I ask you a long meditation?
It's just, just one slide, that's it.
All right, so.
Oh, Mary, if I may, because if you don't mind, I hope you can agree this on what we're going to do. But you know, we do have the Red Cross here that is doing such a great job of educating communities about safety policies and procedures. They're also giving out free smoke detectors and other items and they're here and they need to be because they have others to attend. If you mind, it'd be tough just a second to make sure that they get their.
We're going to bring this back, we pretty much, I think, answered everything, let's just go bring it back. But real, real quick, just want to say, I'm, I'm kind of concerned of some of the, using Monica Garcia's term, charred brown trees that they're putting up. And then you have these other ones that are much larger, the same ones, so we need to correct that gentleman, okay? And, and my last question is, this project's well overdue anyways, what, what, what's supposed to be finished when?
It's supposed to be, um.
May, was it in May?
That's right, we were supposed to be done by the end of May.
By May, I mean, think about it, there's a difference, so whatever. I, I just want to say this is kind of a failure of project, you asked me, especially, I mean, just seeing the way it is right now. I know the circumstances.
And I have to go, I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed because we have had three in-depth study sessions and we did pick the trees and the plants and they're with me, we're talking about the color scheme, we picked everything to a T and we keep making them change it in the middle of construction. So of course they're going to be delayed, I think this is the second time that we changed our minds on something and.
No, no, no.
And I was very concerned, but at some point, we have to also take responsibility. Those decisions should have been made before, right now, we're in the middle of construction. If you decide to change something, it's going to delay it and prolong the process. And I just have to say, we did pick the palette, the trees and everything exactly the way we wanted it. If it doesn't look that way now, you know, my apologies, but we did pick everything. I think it's a responsibility.
I, I agree, however, however, the project's been behind prior to anyone requesting anything. So it hasn't been.
Yeah, and that's mostly because of the sixteen days of no work due to rain.
All right, so let's, let's move on, let's go ahead and bring it, we're going to bring it back, real quick.
Let me just, again, I know that we've chose the palette, but we didn't, we didn't choose the layout of each median. And so to say that we chose this to a T, I think, we, it was a high level. We chose this on a high level, but during the process, there was a lot of community outcry about the removal of these beautiful trees. We changed the plan to preserve trees. That would tell me that there were some cost savings in there and, you know, that would be less trees to remove, less trees to plant. So, you know, I, I think that, yes, there were changes, but they were for the good. And this is a long-term project, our community will live with this. I've heard from people in my, in my neighborhood saying, what's going on with the trees? And this is a, this is a heartfelt, you know, issue for them. And so I just want to say that if we make changes, it's because this is a long-term project and we want the best outcome. So with that, I hope that with the cost savings of cutting down some of the trees and planting, you know, new trees, that we will factor that in as well. Thank you.
All right, yes.
I, I believe to say that we also need to give it a chance. It's like when you last see your, your yard for the first time and it looks like dirt that you planted a lawn or seed or whatever for a lawn. And a lot of the tree, a lot of the plants that you, that you plant aren't really in bloom until the following year and you get an idea of, of what your, what your yard's going to look like. So I think that we, I agree through and do that, we need to give this a chance before we start saying, well, I would like this or I would like that because there's a lot of work at stake that goes into, into a lot of this. And we might even end up saying, you know, like there's some, some spots here where we should put another tree, we should take down a tree or whatever it is. And I think everybody's worked really hard on this project, the rain really slowed down things and it's very unfortunate, but Ballard Park, even though this is long-term, I'm sorry, but let me remind everybody, Ballard Park is out of history of cutting down trees and Alton Perez is here somewhere in the tree. He can vouch for it and the median that we had on Main Street that was completely taken off of along with a bunch of trees. So a lot of us that have been here a long time know that Ballard Park has had its history of cutting down trees, so.
All right, okay, so let's move forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So may I, if I can follow up?
Yes, let's go ahead, we're, we're going over to the Red Cross, the D C, presentation by Jared Fadus, Chief Executive Officer, Norma Vega, Department of Government and Community Affairs, American Red Cross of Los Angeles Region. Thank you, good evening.
Good evening. Is this the microphone?
I think you need to get the microphone.
It's a little lower? Good evening. Mr. Mayor, through you to the State City Council, thank you for having us here today. Norma Vega is with me, Norma, what's your? Norma Vega is our Director of Government and Community Affairs and our sort of touch point to the cities around Los Angeles County. The Los Angeles Regional Red Cross is the second largest Red Cross in the United States and we do a lot of different things, but we wanted to talk to you today a little bit about our disaster services. They're here to serve all of your constituents, but one of the most important ways, the important things about our work is that we rely on our relationships to cities and the community to invite us in so we can provide these services. So we're here today to take a little bit about it so that you can join us in helping your constituents in Oregon. A little bit, first, you probably know, you may know that the Red Cross responds to disasters of all sorts. Typically, you hear about the big ones, right? The earthquakes, wildfires, the floods and the hurricanes. Here, however, in California and across the country, we call the, the, the largest response we do are what we call asylum disasters, the single-family house fires that happen every day in every one of our communities. Those fires, in L.A. County, we probably see about almost four thousand people every year who lose their homes to house fires. So when you add all that up, that's a big, big, a big issue and a big service that we provide. We help everyone in the community, but we rely on the fire departments and the emergency service departments of our cities to notify the Red Cross. If we aren't notified of a fire, we can't respond. Our volunteers will come out at two in the morning or two in the afternoon. We provide financial assistance, we feed folks, we put them up in hotels and we have volunteer caseworkers who will work with them to get new housing. All of this is done free for those who lost their homes. But what we rely on, and one of the reasons they want to share this review, is to help us have a good relationship with the fire department so that they will notify us and we can help your constituents. We also work in preparedness. Mayor Protem Rubio mentioned earlier, some of the services that we provide. We will often do classes for young people. And in many of the cities in San Gabriel Valley, we have a program called the Pillowcase Project that we partner with the Disney Corporation. And we go into fourth, fifth and sixth grade classrooms and we teach them age-appropriate home fire safety tips. We have saved lives, we had a fire in East L.A. where one of the kids we taught got his sibling out of the house when they had a kitchen fire based on the curriculum they learned from the Red Cross in the Pillowcase Project. We would love to teach you elementary school students here that program once school is back in session in the fall and we'd love to partner with you on that. It's free to the city, it's free for all the children. Our AmeriCorps instructors will come in and do that in partnership with the city. Mayor Protem Rubio mentioned as well, smoke detectors. I want to say this in particular because this is probably our premier preparedness program in communities in San Gabriel Valley. Our volunteers will go door to door and typically we make appointments in advance and install free of charge to residents, smoke alarms. While we're doing it, we take a little bit of their time and we educate. How do you do an escape plan? How do you teach your kids what to do if there's a home fire? This education saves lives. Nationally, this program with the Red Cross can save over three hundred lives by installing smoke alarms and teaching folks to teach their kids how to get out of the house. When you have a working smoke alarm, it increases threefold the likelihood that you will be able to successfully escape with your life that fire. It's particularly helpful in saving the lives of elderly residents and children. Early in the morning, this working smoke detector provides, notice I'm saying working smoke detector. A working smoke detector provides, gives people the, the advantage they need to get out of the house. Working smoke detectors are not the same thing as smoke detectors. Most people, most of your constituents will have a smoke detector because of COVID requirements. But many of your constituents will either take the batteries out or for whatever reason, it was hard by a point, it's still on the working. When the Red Cross knocks on the door, we come in to test the smoke detectors, we replace them with ten-year battery smoke detectors, the kind of batteries that you can't take out. So we know they will continue to work for ten years. We are going to be here, I'm going to just give you the, we're going to be on June seventeenth. We're going to be coming a lot of our volunteers from the San Gabriel Valley. We do a number of communities here, we've been in South San Gabriel, we've been in South Albany, Albany. We're excited to be coming here on June seventeenth and we wanted to invite the City Council to promote the event for us because many times our volunteers are joined by residents of the city. We will train folks that morning, meeting at the Holiday Lodge Taylor Park Community at nine o'clock here in Ballard Park. Our goal is to install about three or four hundred smoke detectors in the community. Again, free of charge to the residents and we would really love your help promoting this to the city. Anybody that would like the Red Cross to come that day here in Ballard Park, we will gladly make an appointment, they can just email us or they can, you know, and you can let us know, folks, we'll follow up with them and set up an appointment. This might be a wonderful way, it won't no way, it'll save a life, but it will at some point here in Los Angeles County help save a life and we appreciate your support in all these different ways, the services we're trying to provide in Ballard Park. Happy to get any questions you want to have.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for doing that, it's so important because sometimes people don't realize that they don't even have working smoke detectors. If I remember correctly, even the hotel that had a fire recently had things that were outdated and as you know, that was right attack because they weren't prepared. But I want to offer several things first. I want to make sure that we advertise it on the seventeenth on our website and on the marquee in the parks and connect with Manny Correia if he can to help us advertise it at the community center. Number two, I know that you offer classes and right now school's going to be out, but we do have a center where we have a lot of programs for, for children during the summer. So if you could, Manny, also with child sitting, let's have a class going during the summer. We always have kids that are there, we might as well provide it and we'll provide the staff and the students, sorry, whatever group we need. And third, I think that you guys do a great job also long-term. We do have a safety coordinator here, Manny, it's Mr. Rodriguez. And let's see how we can partner and see how we can have an ongoing plan to see how we can educate people on a quarterly basis, whatever we need to do. Also, I mentioned your seniors, we have senior lunches. I think that we should invite them to come to the senior lunches, if you guys can talk to them and they should know where to get resources as well.
Mayor, but we have a wonderful program, particularly for senior citizens on preparing for earthquakes. Seniors are our most vulnerable population with major disasters. They suffer greater amounts of injury and it's a longer time for them to recover, get back on track in their lives. The best way to ameliorate that, to minimize that, is to help them prepare by giving them the skills they need. We would be happy if there's a program with senior center that brings them together to do a training. We actually just recently did that in El Monte, we have about two hundred senior citizens who were able to get prepared, discuss it. All of this is free, we give great information to folks, we can translate you in Spanish and English, we can also do it in Mandarin and Vietnamese, if those are languages which you would need as well, so.
Thank you very much. And then, that's our main, I'm sorry, press secretary, he'll help you get your information so you can coordinate with you guys. Thank you so much for your participation.
Real quick, yeah, yes, thank you very much. Real quick, want to invite you also to the concerts that we have here, you can set something up and also our street fair that we'll have during the coming up in the next couple of months. Manny Correia will get that for you because this way you could address a big audience for us.
Now, now, the street fair, would there be an opportunity for the booth?
Yes.
Now, we can provide, and we will, the booth will give out lots of information that would, would help folks interact with our services.
Then we'll do it at the concert, you can see publicly and then have your, have your information there.
Wonderful, thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, we're moving on with the next item that we have is the Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing May twenty-first, twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen as National Public Works Week. Who has a proclamation? Oh, oh. That is a big council I have. Oh, sure. All right, so this is Public Works Department here? This you?
Oh, I got, I got David.
Oh, okay, all right. Public Works Week, May twenty-first, twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. The year twenty seventeen marks the fifty-seventh annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Public Works services provided in our community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives and the supportive understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient, the efficient operation of public works systems and the programs such as streets, hybrids, steward storm, rain, streets, lights, traffic signals, graffiti-based environmental program and solid waste collection. The health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and the services. The quality of effectiveness of the public, public infrastructure and facilities as well as the planning, design and construction is vital, is vital, depend upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. So at this point, like to proclaim today Public Works Week, which is from May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh. So a lot of thank you, Sam, and thank all the public works employees that do an awesome job. Sam, I guess, you want to come up here? David, come on up. I guess everyone up here.
Very nice. Very nice.
Yeah, I was, I was. That's very funny, Ben.
Oh, here.
Good. Okay, count three, take a few, one, two, and shout.
Okay, count three, take a few, one, two, and shout. Count three, one, two, and please hold. One more. Last one, thank you.
Manny, use that camera.
Sure. One, two, and hold it. And we are, good.
Alright, thank you. See you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, count three, one, two, and one more, please. Thank you.
Alright, the next one that we have is a presentation by Shane Chan, general manager of the upper San Gabriel Valley Water District. Anyone hear from the?
Yes, Brian.
Oh, Brian, right, oh, come on.
Mr. Slim now.
Oh, yeah, whoa, they recognize you. He must be running. Okay, here we go. And introduce your guest.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Reyes, Director for the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. I also want to recognize my colleague, Alex, who's also here with us. And with us, we have one of my favorite staff members from our district, Miss Patty Cortez, who's our Director of Community and Government of Paris, who's going to give us a brief update on the water supply here in the San Gabriel Valley. Especially with, you know, we're hearing that the drought has passed, but it's a different story here in San Gabriel Valley. We're still facing historic lows when it comes to the actual water level in our aquifers. So with that, I'd like to introduce Patty.
Alright, Patty.
Thank you. So Shane was unable to make it. Little scheduling change, so I'll get me. But I'll be quick and brief for you guys. Just to give you a quick overview of Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, I think you're all familiar with us by now. We are a wholesale water provider for the San Gabriel Valley. We operate in a 144 square foot service area. Your local retailer, obviously, is Valley County Water District. And we are a member of ABCT Metropolitan. So really quick, where does our local water supply come from? Again, just to remind you, we are 77% dependent on local water, which is under the groundwater basin, and 23% of that is imported water. So just to quickly show you the drought progression. So what you have up here is where we were at the height of the drought on July 29th. You can see it was most of California. Where we're at as of May 30th, we are currently in a moderate to normally dry for our area. And I'll explain a little bit on how that's going to impact us. A quick update on our importing resources. Again, as you know, we bring in that imported water from the state water project up north. So as of rainfall, as of May 31st, we have registered 93.5 inches of rain for the current water year. That means that we're 196% above average rainfall for this year alone. For our snowpack, we measured it 44 inches deep. That's 158% of normal as of April 1st. So what does that mean? What we're expecting is a state water project allocation of 85%. And this is really great in terms of bringing that water into the basin. For Colorado River, the rainfall for the current water year was 27.6 inches of rain. That's 116% of average, above average rainfall for the current water year. And for the snowpack peak, we measured it at 20.3 inches. We're expecting a 115% of average in terms of that snow runoff, and that would be great for the Colorado Aqueduct in terms of bringing, again, those resources into Southern California. Because we're expecting such great water from both Colorado and state water project, Metropolitan is going to increase our storage reserves for the current year. If you'll remember, when we came back here at Cleveland with Shane, they mentioned that during the drought, we were going to be drawing from those resources to kind of get us through those three years of major drought. And you see that dip in the resources for 2014, 15, and 16, where Metropolitan drew down those reserves considerably. And what we're anticipating for 2017 is Metropolitan will be increasing their storage reserves anywhere between 2 to 2.2 million acre feet of water. And again, that would be building up some of our local reserves at Diamond Valley Lake and then the ones that we have up north at Estadio. So again, bringing back to San Gabriel Valley. For 2016, 2017, we measured it at 113% of average for our average rainfall here in the San Gabriel Valley. While this is great, because in the last years prior, we weren't meeting what our intended average was. However, we still need 36 inches of rain just to return to normal within our groundwater basin levels. And that's shown here on this slide. We are currently measuring 182 feet in our groundwater basin. This is the measurement that's taken at the Volvo Park operable unit. We still need, we actually need to be above that red line. We anticipate to bring in some storage into the basin. We're currently working with Metropolitan to bring in about 100,000 acre feet of water. Again, that's really great, but that's not going to put us over that red line. What we're also seeing is, while the drought is over and you're hearing all these great stories that we can, you know, we made it through, we're seeing our residents start using more water. And that is concerning for us because, again, we're not completely out of the stage of concern. And so the last bar on this chart shows you what the total water use production is. And you'll see in the first part of the fiscal year for 2016, 2017, we were actually measuring higher than we were the year before. And again, that's concerning because that's the summer months. We did see a little bit of dip in the current January through March, but again, you'll recall, we had a lot of rain during the first quarter of the year, so people weren't watering their lawns as much. So we want to really start pushing, or continuing that, being mindful of their water use, especially as it's going to the summer months. And again, that just goes into reminding our residents that there are still some permanent waste habits that we have to continue promoting. And that's simple things of not closing down your driveway, using a broom. And again, no outdoor watering after 48 hours of a rainstorm. And then making sure that any outdoor watering, whether that's at a median or your own personal lawn, that you ensure that there's no runoff coming off of your sprinkler system. And really quick, just what we do locally. Again, you're familiar with our conservation booths. We're going to continue doing that for our residents. We actually solidified yesterday our Water Fest 2007. This is a big water conservation event that we'll be having at Santa Fe Dam on October 14th of this year. We're continuing to do our landscape classes to our residents. We have one coming up on June 10th. And we just recently held one last Saturday in Spanish here in your city. And then also, I wanted to really highlight this. We've been coming and talking to the city and also the school district on our large landscape survey retrofit program. This is a grant program that Upper District received funds from the Bureau of Reclamation. We have about $1 million in funds that we need to expend. We have currently completed 104 sites throughout our service territory. We've completed five survey sites and retrofits for the city of Volvo Park. And those were Morgans, Barnes, Piltoff, Solit, Shire, and Walnut Creek Nature Parks. So we want to thank the city for their, you know, assistance and partnership in letting us go into these parks. And we're finally very happy to announce that we have now made inroads with the school district. So we'll be going out to each of the school sites and performing surveys at each of the sites and then concluding with the retrofits as well. And all of this will be taken apart through our grant and no cost to the schools. And then our final two things is our water treatment restoration volunteer events. If you guys would like to come out to the canyon and help us plant some saplings that need to be reforested, we would welcome you on June 24th and also on July 29th. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, yes, and first of all, thank you and thank the Brian Reyes and all the members for phenomenal job in water. Of course, that's life for every one of us. And in fact, you mentioned, I think that we need to do is have this in the newsletter as well, to remind the residents, you still need to be conservative. Of course, I personally think these beautiful pine trees that we had a lot when we didn't hear, they got diseased based on the fact that we didn't water them. Seems like other cities didn't do, we lost overall, but that's a whole different story. And I think it's also important maybe to have you come and speak at our concerts and also maybe set up a table, as well as our street fair. This is a very, very crucial subject and very important. Let me just ask one question. Al Pinteras was here and mentioned at one time that the, what's the name of that? Where they have that band that was great that they had to release water and just went out?
Like, "Morgue"?
Yes, I mean, because that water had been brought out to other asset farms and it just seems like that was more of a political thing. And then just allow me to just to gunshot there that we're trying to save them. Because he brought up an interesting subject, because I also heard the same thing, Al. About that, I'm like, what's your opinion on that? I'm kind of curious. Because I didn't hear what he said by three other people that also said the same thing. That's why when he mentioned, it kind of stood with me, and I was just kind of curious. You don't want to answer that, so?
No, 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 it was actually a dam failure at Lake Orville. There, so all the water that was coming over and then actually reached over the top of Lake Orville was due to the fact that there were parts of the spillway that had collapsed. And so because they were not able to release normal flows into the river because of that collapsed spillway, that's why you had the breach. So it was really just a perfect storm of events. And unfortunately, the state is currently where it's at, where they've had to remove the entire spillway and now build it back up. But it wasn't like a plot to let water spill away. There was actually a breach in the spillway and it was a failure on that.
Alright, I appreciate that. Thank you, Al, thank you very much for that as well as the marriage. It made me wonder that. Thank you very much for the presentation, thank you. Board member, will I ask the President? You the President? You're right, okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, so at this point, we have one last one, which is the presentation by Garrett, Chief Sustainability Officer, County of Los Angeles, regarding the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Power Authority. Okay, thank you. Good evening, you know, you're successful, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm John Furigro, he had a, San Barbara. I'm Bill Carnegie, I'm the interim executive director for the LA County Choice Energy Program. And Matthew Scolding is here. He's the staff manager at the county who has been working on this project for a couple of years. We'll be sort of abbreviating a lot, our normal expectation due to your busy schedule, but I don't want to infringe on that. So I guess what I would tell you, we're here to bring you up to date on some important actions that were taken by the county with regard to creating community choice aggregation into LA County and offering participation along with them as a member of all the some 80-plus cities in the county. And your folks, I know your city manager has been, is aware and has been somewhat involved in this effort. So we're not going to go through all the details, but just to tell you that the county has voted to create a CCA, Community Choice Aggregation, a system for all of the loads in the unincorporated areas of LA County. So they will be the aggregator and the supplier. Now, if you look at what's actually taking place in California is the opportunity, and you all have the opportunity for the residents of Volvo Park, to provide a choice for your citizens as to who their energy supplier will be as an alternative to Southern California Edison. You also retain a great degree of local control that you don't currently now have, and you'll end up with lower rates. And the important part of this is that you are not requiring your customers to take service. It's an optional program. It starts out that all, if you create a CCA in Volvo Park, then all of your citizens, industrial customers, commercial customers, would come in with the opportunity to opt out and go back to Edison if they didn't like the service. The current CCAs that are operating in California have an opt-out rate of about 5%. So it's a pretty popular program overall. But citizens who choose to do that for whatever reason, they can do that. The genesis of the CCA law says that historically, the investment on utility, in this case, Southern California Edison, provided all the services to their, to the customers, including generation, transmission, distribution, customer services. And in order to provide choice in California, the legislature passed a bill the governor signed that says a community choice aggregator can provide the energy portion of the bill to the residential and commercial industrial customers. You still use Edison's transmission system, distribution system, billing system, and pay for it, the same as their customers do. But you'll see in a minute why that choice may be important for you to have for your customers. The county voted to do that and set up a system that said, well, we don't want to go along. There are lots of economies of scale in the electric utility business or energy business. And so we would like to offer participation as members of any of the cities in LA County that would like to join us. They will be a member, they won't be an LA program. They are simply one of the choice aggregators in the county. The county spent money on studies over the last two years to see whether or not it's economically viable or feasible to do that. And the results of that study say, yes, it is. And the result that the CCA will be offering to the citizens are three rate schedules. The first one, as you can see, the blue up there is Edison. The green is the LA County Choice Energy Program. So the standard rate, which is, and if you think of these, the one on the left really is the lowest level of renewables, which is the cheapest cost. So if you're cost-driven, you would gravitate to the left rate. The one on the right says for customers who want 100% renewables, they want to go all in, there is a rate for that. And the one in the middle is for 50% renewables. And I think you can see, if you look at the chart, the CCA is lower in all cases. Standard case, 50% case, and 100% case. So you do have the opportunity to lower your customers' costs within Volvo Park by about 5%. The average for the CCAs in California is about 5%. Now, the business plan, we're kind of jumping through our slides here so we can make up some time. So the governance, there is going to be a joint powers agency created of all the participants. Each participant will have one member on the board. That board member will be an elected official from the city. And there will be two alternates. One, and the suggestion is that one of them be maybe a staff member, a more technical kind of a person. And the other can also be an elected person, or anyone that you want. Or give me someone from the community as far as that goes. The operation of the CCA is that it's one entity, one vote, for virtually all of the items. And I have you come from a joint action agency background. You know, I manage a joint action agency that had 13 members that were pretty diverse. They were municipal electric utilities in Southern California. And you always have the issue of, how do you give the little members a voice and yet have them not run over the big members or vice versa? How can you outwardly make decisions and not have anybody driving the train or blocking decisions? And in my case, I had the Los Angeles Department of Water at one end and the City of Banning at the other. Now, that's two pretty, quite extremes, at least population-wise. And this kind of a system works, and it works in a lot of JPAs. It says that for most of the items, for really all items, unless a different kind of rules called for, it's one entity, one vote. If there's an action taken, and it has to be an affirmative action of the law, is taken, three members, so you can't have one member, again, a big member, saying, I want to rethink that. I want a weighted vote, knowing that their size might to carry the day. There have to be three members that agree to call for a weighted vote. And you call for a weighted vote, and we'll move on from there. So it's a way to try to balance the large and the small interests in the joint action agency. Two questions that come up a lot with regard to when you establish the CCA, what happens to franchise fees? Edison now pays the franchise fee to all the cities in California, or Southern California. That doesn't change. That's based upon a formula that will not change. What could be impacted is the utility usage tax. And I think you all have one, it's about 3% or something like that, if that's correct. But it, because, it's based on gross revenues or gross receipts that are paid for energy. If, in fact, the CCA's rates are 5% lower, then the utility user tax collection would be impacted by that 5%. Now, the offset for that is all of the city's loads, including street lighting, would be under the new lower rate. So you're saving money. So you're saving money with regard to services that you have from municipal facilities. See, all, for example, you have a 5% reduction in costs to help offset the reduction. The, I guess the good news is your customers are getting service 5% less. They got more money in their pocket to spend in the businesses and whatnot down down. So it's not all bad news just because of, you know, it might get impacted. You also have more control over your customer service programs. They can be tailored and designed by you all in terms of targeted groups, you know, their low income groups, energy efficiency programs, there's all kinds of programs that you can help direct more locally. Right now, those programs are developed pretty much on a regional basis, you know, sort of cookie cutter as far as Edison is concerned. There's not a lot of customization. In this case, you can customize. Again, my example and my entity before, because they were like utilities had those programs, certainly Vermin had different programs than Pasadena has, because those are two totally different communities. So they're able to direct those where they need to be. Customer billing will still be done by Edison. The CCA will pay for that. It'll end up as being one line item on the bill. The bill will look exactly the same, but it will say that the CCA portion, which is the energy portion of the bill, will be separated. Now, what do we need next? The county needs one more partner and we expect to have our first city member in the next week or two. And then we'll have a real live functioning joint action agency. Now, when the joint action agency was created, there was a lot of input from the cities to the county to draft what this JPA is going to look like. And a lot of the things that are in that JPA are being deferred to the new board. You know, how business is conducted, staffing, strategic planning. There's a call for in the creation documents for citizen advisory committee so that you actually can get grassroots input into the JPA. There's nothing in the creating documents other than you will have one. It doesn't say who they will be. Does one city have one member or is it done by backgrounds or inputs or the agencies? That was all left for the members to decide how they want to do it. So here's what's being proposed. The county is ready, it's going to do phase one and it'll only be the county loads. That way, if there are any hiccups in the building or getting up to speed or errors, there's only one customer that gets impacted, that's the county. You don't send it out to residential folks like all of the, probably read about LA DW P a couple of years ago, got in big trouble because they were sending out erroneous bills to several thousand people. And so that will take place starting January 1 and then there's a phase two that starts six months after that. And that's when the city's going to begin to participate. So what we're here to do is to tell you the city, there is going to be a joint action agency created. We invite you and urge you to consider joining the JPA. And you have a window of six months. We said from the date the JPA starts, we need to accumulate board members and members before we can actually have a functioning board to make some of these board decisions. And the quicker you get in, the more impact you're going to have on those decisions. There are some 80 cities in LA County, we certainly don't expect all of them to join, but we expect that we will get several. And the sooner you get in, in that six month timeframe, you can help frame and guide and direct what that JPA is going to look like. So after that, you can still join, but depending on what activities they perform, we said in, with an abundance of caution to show you the pluses and the minuses. There could be a cost associated with that. We don't know that there will be. We don't know what that will be. But just to tell you that if all several members have spent six months putting this thing together and maybe have expended some funds doing so out of the agency. By the way, the county gave the agency a $10 million startup loan. So the cities in that six month period can come in at no cost. So you have to then look at after that sort of grace period, the urge here is to get folks in early, get a lot of people participating so the agency is truly reflecting all members. We would ask you to do that. So the agency will help with outreach. One of the things we have to do is if you do become a CCA and join, all of your citizens are going to be in this JPA. So a lot of customer information has to go out. Several mailings, workshops, that's going to take about six months and the JPA will help do that, help guide that so that your customers are not surprised. They know they have, they will know they have an option. They can exercise the option before the agency gets fully operational. So you don't have to get in and get out. You can just say, I don't want it from day one and no questions asked, then we're done. So that all has to take place. So I think that's probably the end of my time. So with that, I encourage you to work with your staff and seriously consider becoming a participant. We're happy to answer any questions, come back if you want to do any more in-depth analysis, but I think I'm good at it on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Costner. Yes. Got another check.
So, you know, it sounds like a great concept. I mean, I've heard about this before, it's been a long time, kind of in your experience. But what are the things that, you know, once you used to pay the electric bill the way they do, and once you start changing things, they, you know, kind of get a little bit, what does the agency do to go on and do the community outreach and have people understand what changes are it been or are it been impacted?
Well, there are actually some requirements of how many times notification has to take place, the form of the notification. But the city and the JPA would have to work with cities if they want more of that. I mean, you can, it's locally controlled now. You can, if you think you need special emphasis in a certain area, that can be done. So the key is to make sure really that customers do understand and you don't get afraid that something's being thrust on them. It is voluntary, they can get out. The bill itself will look exactly the same. It'll have Edison's name, it'll be one page, in the middle is the mockups that we've been looking at. We've been working with them for the last several months to try to smooth out the rough edges here. They've done it to other smaller CCAs, so it's not totally new ground that we're plowing here. But we would want to be aware of any special needs that you might have and try to address those.
Now, about how much on the average would a resident seat or business in Volvo?
About 5%.
And about how much would you go up each year? I don't think Edison was up about 10%. What would we see?
Well, the nice, what really allows CCAs to happen today is that when you talk about renewables in particular, the cost of renewables is coming down every year. So that takes a lot of pressure off of the rates going forward because your next income is cheaper than the one before. So if the JPA grows large enough, you get economies of scale, spread staffing costs, although we don't close, although it's going to have a small staff, but it'll operate pretty lean and lean, if you will. Contract out for services for the resource part of it. There's no reason to focus on the board when there are companies that have computers and the algorithms to do that, just like Edison does. So it'll be a very parallel kind of operation, but we'll save, save about 5%.
Can you send your staff reports to the city managers so we can get a word from you?
Yes, in fact, we have a mock staff report, but I think we, I think we tried to send all the city managers. We also have the CCA creation document and then the document, the resolution that joins the JPA.
All right, thank you, Costner.
No, actually, part of Councilor Pacheco's question was what I was going to ask about the rates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to just say in closing that this California Public Utilities Staff released a report last month, in which they estimate that 85% of the current customers being served by the investment on utilities in California by the mid 2020s will be served by a CCA or have their own generation locally. So this is not new. It's gaining a lot of momentum and it's going to have a tremendous impact and we would hope that you'd like to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, at this point, we've been a lot. We don't have any further presentations. I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone who wishes to speak, please state your name. We have approximately three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Alvin Perez, President of Volvo Park. I liked the presentation about mediums. I brought it to two or three former other board directors. The problem that we have and we continue to have, most of everything else is maintenance. I'm sure each and every one of us have drawn a line, driven along Volvo Park Boulevard or Ramona slash stadium. How many times have we had our cars washed because the sprinkler wasn't working or if it was, it was broken? So whatever you guys decide to do, please, please, you can span anything, you can beautify everything, but your maintenance will be your key issue on anything you do today. And that's why it's costing us money for the future. And because of changes, I agree with Director Cruzbata, some of you have mentioned it. This would not be proper maintenance, we're changing, I brought this attention four or five years ago when we started and began. We did have water rationing, but if the maintenance in the water was being spread accordingly, 80% of those trees would have been saved. I worked, talked to the previous chief executive officer and many, many of you personally, and I said, it's coming. So it should not be a surprise to any one of you. And water issues, I could go on for another 10 minutes. I know I'm running out of time. Right now, it's just, again, your maintenance is very important or whatever you do. You can span it, I guarantee you, you're already, what you budgeted and where you're going to end up, it's going to end up. And it's going to quadruple when you have to replace each and every tree. So my only recommendation to each and every one of you is wash your mains, find out that every sprinkler is working, not broken, shooting straight out. We've all seen it. We all brought it to our attention. But you also need to monitor when you, also the time that you water. Those are key issues to our maintenance department, to our residents and everything else. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate that.
Hello, City Council, the President of Volvo Park. On your proposal number five, you know, this is great, but are these people going to give us anything? I'll tell you what, if I was as a committee, I would tell them, you give our school district 500 computers, who'll give you the map? Why not? Okay. Number 12 and 13 are the same issue. The lady over here said it's not a tax. If it's not a tax, why is it on our tax, income tax, our tax papers? She put it right here. I'll read it to you people. That way she can understand, no matter if it's an assessment or whatever you guys want to call it nowadays, it's still a tax. I'm going to read it, okay? It says, well, I gotta get to number 12. Okay, it says right here in your language, this is it. And off the right, the Los Angeles County Officer gave this special assessment to the property tax bill. Now, tell me if it isn't true, it's a tax. I know she reads some other kind of religious paperwork or whatever she reads, it's still a tax. And you people have to understand that. Also, Manny, your park project is a mess over there at Nature Park. Water system had a broken pipe. They're pouring thick cement. Half the, your SoCal Bridge is cracking, falling apart. You know, I don't know what you guys did to it, but it ain't looking too good. You go to the men's restroom, excuse me ladies, you can stand there and do your thing in the men's urinal and people outside can watch you. What kind of engineer did you have do that? It's sick. You know, you're supposed to have all this education. Where did it go? Let me tell you, it didn't go anywhere. You know, the people that are going to use that so-called nature park, the drug people, the homeless, they're already packed in their cars. You guys patch up the so-called chain link fence, they go around, they climb over it and they live in the park at night. I don't think anybody sent the police down there to check it. You guys are too busy doing other things. So why can't you people bring back our swings? You put that monkey set up there, do we look like monkeys? Answer the, you should give me a response. Somewhere along the line, you should respond. We spent all that money, home people gave it to us, and you give it away. Where is it?
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. For a lot of public communication.
Number 12, Jacque Rios, resident. For the last meeting, Mayor, you brought up 2008, that you were doubtful of budgets and everything. That's why we had the sheriff's department coming here and tried to recruit all our police departments. The only way they got stopped is by a judge. They told him it was against the law for them to come in here and try to take over. Some of you and the two Garcias were doing it at that time. We used to call you guys the Frescomiles, okay? No matter what Ricardo or Susio would bring up, they could have saved us millions of dollars, you guys would shut them off, okay? That thing about San Siro, I don't think we dismissed him for a simple reason that he went and did a contract that he shouldn't have gotten. I think he was having guides from other people. I don't want to mention no names, but I think he was set up, okay? I didn't have nothing against him. The way he was trying to bully his way in to the police department and stuff again, that's a no-no. So that's, that's one of the things, you know, why did he do it? He wanted to bring the sheriff's department here again? Was that his long-term plan? And him going to the schools, again, saying, oh, I'm going to be the new chief, even after he got fired, he went to the schools again? That's wrong. The next school district meeting, I'll be there to complain about that, okay? So that's about it. But think of what you guys are going to do before you do it. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon or good evening. I'm the mayor and City Council, Valerie Munoz, from the city of LaGuardia. But I'm actually here as your board director representing City Volvo Park and non-cities and non-cumming ranks for the San Yerro Valley, San Yerro Basin Water Quality. There is such a long name there, but so. Just coming here just to say hello. You know, I made the commitment as your representative to be accessible and visual and visible here in your city. And I just wanted to just say hello, I'm here. And also, I know I led with your sweet clerk, the invitations. I wanted to personally invite you to the upcoming tour that I'll be hosting on Monday, July 17 at 10:30 in the morning. It's a 90-minute briefing tour. I know the time is of essence for all of those council members, so we will provide lunch, so quick, be there, food's available. But just to give you a tour, to kind of give you a whole general overview of what we do at the WQA and the cleanup efforts. In addition, I also left the press release of the Volvo Park operable unit that we just signed the extended contract and that's also on your desk there. And just to review the, it went into effect last month and it secured between 200 and 250 million dollars that will continue the cleanup efforts of the water here in our basin. And again, just wanted to say good evening, have a great meeting, and I'm here as your representative and I'm thankful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, but I'm the director's team, right? Yes, thank you, but I'm the director's team, right?
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to just speak on their public indication?
Greg Tullow, business owner. Uh, first of all, I want to welcome the chief back, Doctor. I don't know what we need to call you, but I'll just call you Chief, welcome back. And, uh, I, I, I think it was well deserved. Uh, now back on the, the agenda, Sid Masavi, he's been a real thorn in my side. This infrastructure comes in, goes over his limit of a hundred and twenty thousand, which we put way overboard for council approval. Now he's over limit, now he wants more money until the end of June. Then you have on your approval that you want to try and bring him in the Corack Avenue and do more engineering over there, give him some more money. Then we have him on the agenda again, that you want to extend his contract out through June two thousand and nineteen, and then you wanted to add another couple of years on it. We need to get new blood in here, and we need a person that doesn't go to all these other cities and these, in these audits with South Elmani, Montebello, and the southern things of Bell down in there. This guy has issues with all these cities and what he charges and how he charges. And then he demands payment before you even get a chance to look at his bills. This has gotta stop, like I talked to you last night, it needs to be a thirty-day grace, you need to review his bills. Now, this isn't right for our staff to drop everything they're doing to do this. South Elmani has the same issues with this guy, Montebello has the same issues with this guy. This has to stop. We need to treat it as a regular business, this isn't a buddy deal because he gives out cash donations to every one of the council members on, for election. We need to stop this. Now, we see the stuff he does of over expenditures, like he did on the mosquito vector deal, that was a joke. Then we did the Walnut Creek where he did, he had, uh, engineering over there. He's done engineering on the mediums, which we see as a screw-up. Then we got the bus stop platforms, and then we got the storm drain runoffs, that he was supposed to have all this, uh, to get money in for the city from businesses. I bet if you ask Shannon, I don't see too much of that coming in. Maybe we should look into what he's really getting paid and what he does. But I think you guys need to review this before you start giving him any more extensions, and you need to get new blood in here and start getting some other RFPs out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tullow. I'd want a lot of public indication. Oh. But isn't Terry Mee?
Um, hi, my name's Kiana Emane, and, um, I'm the intern for waste management. Uh, I just wanted to introduce myself and say what I'm doing for the internship. Well, what I'm doing here is pretty much organization, filing, and going along with her to other places. Like yesterday, we just went to Cal, with Cal Recycle, and we went around looking at helping recycling and using the organics, which was really good. It helps you actually see how the conservancy corrects. But, um, yeah, I just wanted to thank her for this opportunity, and she's made it a lot easier for me, and she made it much more comfortable for me to go around, and she introduced very nicely. So I just wanted to thank her.
And she will see her at the council in the park, she'll be doing her recycling education booth. Um, also, she'll, she'll be coming to the council meetings making reports periodically. She's only gonna be a junior service to high school, so she was picked because, as you can tell, she's definitely mature for somebody who's gonna be a junior. So we're really happy to have her.
All right, thank you. More public indication? If not, at this point, I will be further below. All right.
Okay, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank, uh, Terry Mee, it's one of the commitments that, you know, we, we discussed early on, so I'll be very, 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 very polite. Like, this, you know, I'm so proud of you for doing this, you know, it's really hard to come up here and speak some plans, especially as adults, you know, especially in your, your number of fight. Thank you, Terry, for, for keeping that commitment to bringing on people as interns to, to run the business, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, I just wanted to piggyback on that and say thank you to the new chair and, and waste management, for the opportunity. I know the other students that you brought here, from Fullerton and Riverside, so thank you so very much, it's, it's really great.
Well spoken, young lady, good choice.
All right, awesome, thank, thank you, Councilwoman Flaca. All right, so at this point, uh, we're gonna go into the same calendar, so I'm gonna pull item number nine. Councilmember, do you wish to pull any items?
Yes, I would like to pull four, five, six, ten, and eleven.
Whoa, okay, good.
Sorry.
Okay. Move your item before twelve.
Okay.
All right, all right, so at this point, uh, next move, uh, with the exception of, uh, items number three, seven, eight.
No, I didn't say three, four.
Oh, you did say four, okay, so then, uh, one?
Four.
Oh, five, six, uh, the tenth, eleven, there's my motion.
Seven.
Yeah, oh, I, I pulled nine as well, huh, all right. Then, uh, that is my motion, second by Councilmember Gavino Pacheco, any objections? See not so long. I would go with item number four, which is by Councilmember Cruz Baca, the appropriation of additional funds for infrastructure engineer, uh, building plan check service.
Uh, yes, um, I would like, I just, is it, is it you, Amy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I would like to put an explanation on that, I did see your staff report it, and I read it. However, I did see on the warrants and demands that in May, uh, the total for A A D and infrastructure is close to sixty-five thousand dollars, or a little over sixty-five thousand. So could you please explain those extra expenses to us?
Most likely, if there was one check that you saw, I'm assuming that is a combination of not only our service of building, but also public works. I only pay them for the month of April, eighteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and ninety-six cents.
What happened to be hold off and take a look at this a little further without appropriating the, um, extra fifty thousand dollars? Because it says, uh, the June, May-June invoices will average about eleven thousand each. However, I keep seeing on the warrants and demands, but I, I understand that it becomes a part of the public works, but, but usually it's on the average of about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, with, and I only did, this is only related to building plan check, what we do off-site. If we don't approve this tonight, the rest of their, um, ABA bill won't get paid, and all the plan checks that behind the building plan check will have to stop. Because I'm assuming they're not gonna wanna work for free. Um, which means then we won't be receiving the revenue in from people wanting to get their plan checks done, getting their remittions done. Um, the Pacific project down, um, just north of Puente, the forty-seven unit project, none of those will end up being reviewed. And how I came up with the eleven thousand per month for, um, May and June was I actually took an average of what we paid out so far and divided it by the number of months.
Okay, because here, for building plan check services, it does give you a total for sixteen seventeen. See the back here?
Right, yeah.
Um, it says, starting August, um, twenty sixteen to May of twenty seventeen.
Right, those are all the invoices that we've paid so far, and what I did is I averaged those out and I came out to about eleven thousand dollars.
But that's only your department, right?
All we've been always, only for off-site plan check.
Um, I would like, well, you know, it, it's like we're caught between a rock and a hard place. If, if I say let's just hold this off, the people can't get their plan checks, um. I don't know, it's a tough call, I, I don't wanna make this decision right now, to be honest, because with the budget the way it is and stuff, and I know that it will be holding up a lot of our plan checks and stuff.
Well, keep in mind that infrastructure gets paid from the plan check fees, which we collect when somebody submits their drawings to be reviewed. So there is no impact on our general fund with this. They get pursuant to their contract sixty-five percent of whatever we collect on the plan check fee, and then we retain the thirty-five percent.
Okay, I make a motion.
I have a question, just to clarify, um, because it was brought up and I just wanna understand it. I can let, we get the money in first, and then we, we pay out of the money we collect out of the fee count, and that's what the staff report says. But someone, sometimes I see the invoices, they get paid in advance versus when the job is completed, like, how does that happen? Like, for example, if there was, um, a May invoice, the check, no. So can you just explain it, pretend I don't know, explain how those invoices get paid before, as soon as they submit them, or when the job is completed? Can you explain that to me?
I get invoices at the beginning of every month, and they're extremely detailed. They put the address on them, the, if there is a building plan check, a mechanic plan check, a plumbing plan check, or an electrical plan check. And each one of those are itemized out. It shows what we collected plan check, it shows sixty-five percent of that, and then what we pay. I do not pay anything ahead of time until the work is done and completed the building.
So it's probably another department that I saw in.
Could be.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right.
I want somebody else to say, I, I make a motion, maybe, Amy, I mean, that's very thorough, and I can't, I guess it satisfies my, my inquiries. I, I make a motion, we can, we can.
I'll second, any objections? See not so long. All right, we'll go down to item five, request by Councilwoman Flaca, the approval of a, of a third project, which is from the certain group in Environmental Science Associate ESA and the city of Ballon Park for CEQA-related services for the four six, sorry, sixty thousand, uh, S F office and medical office building, which we tell news at fourteen six point four dash fourteen sixty two, uh, six. Councilwoman Flaca.
Uh, could you please explain that to me, just for me, I know that it's a huge building and it's, it scaled, but I'm assuming it's going, uh, by Kaiser, correct?
No, actually, I'm gonna hand it over to the project planner.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, um, the sixty thousand square foot, six-story building, um, project is both actually on dale wood, which is just south of the freeway. Uh, it's a vacant lot that's adjacent to the regency. Uh, it's.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So that vacant lot there is for the applicants proposing, in order for this project to proceed, um, before any kind of hearing or anything like that, we need to go through our environmental review process. State has determined that it needs a mitigated declaration, uh, and we sent out an RFP, the consultants responded, we had several proposals, and we selected, uh, consultants. Uh, we included the applicant on the selection. Um, for this agreement to go through, basically, we, we're requiring that the applicant provide or pay the full contract price so that we can go ahead and pay for this CEQA consulting for this project to continue. And so this request is so that the city council authorized the mayor to, um, sign off on this particular issue.
And it's right there, you said next to the regency?
It is, it's a vacant, uh, it's, yeah, it's a vacant one, um, next to the regency, uh, beside it, it's, uh, I believe automotive.
With a, with a ship.
Yeah, no, I, I know, but it's six-story, what do you think, Amy, six-story, okay?
It's permitted, it'll, it'll be at the regency.
Oh, gee, thanks.
And the use is permitted by, however, they have some entitlements that they need to obtain, hence the CEQA. And we will be working closely with our neighborhood, neighbor-city must have been into the rear on this as well.
Yes, yes. All right, I make a motion to go ahead and pass.
I'll second, any objections? All right, uh, item number six, by Councilwoman Baca, approve amendment to professional services for the video production and cable television actresses.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I guess it's, um, Manny Korea will answer this, and I would like to know. Right, is it, I know it's you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it's you, that's okay, sorry. Is this for our, is this, is this for our, um.
Local public channel? Yes, it is.
What, okay.
Yes, it is.
I, I have a question, are they here today? No?
I, I invited Lance, I told him Lance.
Okay, I understand, okay. The only thing is, is that it seems like, even with this agreement, I would see like a variance of different things that go on in the city, that go on, uh, that. It seems like everything keeps repeating and repeating and repeating, is there something new that comes up? Is there, could we do something about that to make it a little more exciting?
Yeah, we can, oh, yeah, we have, um, a pretty big latitude, we've negotiated a pretty big latitude in our contract with them. Um, you see them a lot primarily during our summer months, with our concerts in the park, in our street fair. Um, and they also come to other events that the community center, um, puts on and does. So, but yeah, we can talk to Lance about that, that's all.
Yeah, talk to him, please, so that you also, I don't know, I had spoken to him about it, and I, I have not seen any of our, like, public announcements. Like, say for reasons that the police department would want to put something on there of safety issue or whatever, like, say, for the fourth of July signing up. Or if there's something that's going on with something else, like, uh, earthquake preparedness or something. I had spoken to him about it last year, and I've never seen anything like that on it as far as, you know, like, public announcements.
We can take care of that, that's not a problem. Um, I know Manny has somebody in his department that's right on this. Last year, there was kind of an overlap because that person did move on, so, you know, maybe that could be, but yeah, no, we, yeah, we've got covered, not, not an issue.
Okay, then I make a motion to pass.
All right, I'll second, any objections? All right, we'll go up to item number nine, that I requested a full hour, which is the approval of employment agreement with Gustavo Romo for the position of community developer on the record. Just wanna, he's here tonight, right?
Yes.
I just wanna say, I'd say I did have a difference of opinion with, then this, this big issue with the city of Irwindale and its potential effects, and long-term effects on the residents of Ballon Park, whether that particular area. When I thought about it, you know what, I obviously can't blame him directly because it's a city ballpark and, uh, the city of Irwindale, and he works for them, and of course, he's delivering this job. So I will support Mr. Gustavo Romo, I think that he's gonna bring, uh, uh, new, uh, enthusiasm to the actual department itself. And I think it's important for us, and it's a crucial time, uh, for us to bring in someone like himself. Uh, just to let you know, he's sitting right here in the back, did you stand up real quick, Mr. Gustavo Romo, thank you. Uh, he is a product of the city of Ballon Park, a tenant, a service to high school, what did you recommend?
He was nineteen eighty-seven.
Nineteen eighty-seven, okay, so, uh, one, one, thanks very much, and I will make the motion, uh, for, for contracting to the, hiring you as a park in the city of Ballon Park, and our expectations are gonna be big with all of this up here, so we're looking forward. And second, who's the second one?
Susie.
Okay, all right, so, so thank you, looking forward, and let's get ready to work, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go to item number ten, which is the, the pool of additional funding for city projects, uh, number twenty sixteen, uh, twenty sixteen dash zero one five two. The Corack Avenue Storm drain, request by Councilwoman Cruz Baca.
Uh, again, I, I guess this is directed at Amy, so that you can explain again the. No, it's, it's, oh, it's, oh, it's worth, okay? Can you explain again, I guess it's probably the same explanation that Amy gave me, but I, I would really like for the record to be explained.
Yes, um, so, uh, this, this project is for the Corack Storm drain, uh, a new experience in major setback at the intersection of Francis Kito and Ramona. Uh, that portion of the project is incomplete, uh, the contractor has chosen to leave the project, so now we are in negotiations for a closeout. So this is just to play some, uh, change order related to all of that.
All right, I make a motion that we go ahead and, and move forward.
Second? Yes, any objections?
What was that?
All right, number ten.
Just real quick, so, like, for being one?
We're, hi.
Okay, can you repeat the motion?
Uh, the motion is to approve the additional funding for city project number twenty sixteen dash zero one five two for a happening storm drain.
I heard something different.
All right, okay, thank you. At this point, uh, Councilmember Cruz Baca requests a number eleven to refinance in two thousand and four lease revenue bonds.
And this, I don't know, whoever this belongs to, sorry, guys, I, I guess I had my turn to, to, today, the refinancing of two thousand and four lease revenue bonds?
Yes, for you and the mayor and city council. Name is wrong, right? Just missed. This item is to authorize the debt we're seeing to financing the city's outstanding two thousand four lease square inch bond and a full selection of underwriter finance advisor and bond council. And this outstanding bond was issued in nineteen eighty-nine to, uh, to finance the construction of community center. And in two thousand and four, and the bond was financed and issued additional three point eight million uh, for the improvement of the city's, uh, for the area and the senior center. And for step one. And the step, this some study, and that we, we find out with, uh, to finance this bond, and taking the advantage of the lower interest rate, we will have the city save, uh, for about one million in seventeen years, about sixty thousand dollars per year in general fund. And also, we recommend to, uh, select, uh, hell and company and tree, tree, uh, who just help the city complete the successor agency with financing. Uh, previously, we select them through a competitive process, through the competitive process, and also the city require to select, uh, underwriter, uh, which go out to, uh, select investor and then sell the bond to those investors, and we have, uh, we have find out a few, uh, interests, uh, with, uh, finance, same firm and underwriter firm, and we provided the three firm here, and which is the B O K financial, they came out with thirty-eight thousand dollars in fee, and Piper Jeffrey, which will charge the city fifty-three thousand, and New Palm William will charge the city fifty thousand dollars. And based on the lowest bid, uh, staff recommend to select, uh, B O K, and which we have their red comment, uh, virus here in the audience, in case you have questions, and she happened to be the partner of the city of Ball Park, she worked in city of Ball Park, and also graduated from Ball Park High School, I found out the other day, and she's my, in case you have any questions.
Oh, wow, who's that?
Thank you. And, and therefore, happened to, uh, have a low speed thirty-eight thousand dollars compared to other firm, fifty, thirty thousand, fifty thousand, and also she has, uh, over twenty years' experience.
Well, thank you, I make a motion, and welcome, uh, of course, the look is that her brother, her brother was the youngest voter in the city of Ball Park, so, congratulations. Thank you. So I make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I just have a quick question for you. Uh, so when you refinance, sometimes the money is available for capital to your project, right? You said it was sixty thousand dollars available after the refinance?
Yes, after you refinance this bond, you provide a saving of sixty thousand dollars per year, possibly. So, you will be one million savings for the next seventeen years.
Okay, but is there...
Which you, uh, which you, uh, go to the general fund.
Okay, uh, is there any other money you want to borrow, or do you want capital to your project? Is it, like, anybody available for that, or?
I cannot go through that, but I was just doing, uh, the study, how you can provide saving to the cities.
Okay, maybe, maybe if you look...
Do you want me to, uh, ask that question of, for the research, if you can get, like, so it was saying we, if cities can get additional funding?
Yes.
Or finance?
Yes, to use up the capital to your project in the city, so.
Okay.
All right, then.
Give me back, I'm agreeing.
Basically.
Okay, ready, okay.
I, I make a motion to, to number eleven, which is refinancing of two thousand four lease revenue bonds.
Second, any objections? See, no so move. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Trump.
Yes.
All right, so we'll go down to, uh, the public hearing, we have a couple, the first one is the public hearing and adoption of resolution number twenty seventeen dash one nine one, ordering the assessment for the citywide landscape and lighting maintenance assessment district for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, did we open up this one last?
Yeah.
We did, right? All right, so at this point, anyone have any...
Uh, mayor, we did not, we approved the...
We did not?
We approved the action of course.
Oh, got it, got it, all right, so at this point, I will open up the public hearing for any motion to speak in favor. Anyone opposed? See, no interest, and I declare the public, uh, hearing closed, at this point, we'll just make a motion. Unless anyone has any questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? All right, so at this point, uh, go over to item thirteen, uh, second public hearing, the public hearing and adoption of resolution number twenty seventeen dash one nine two, ordering the assessment for the citywide park maintenance assessment district for fiscal year twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen. Who's handling this? Okay, I'm gonna go and open up, did we open it last, or not? All right, so I'm gonna go and open up, anyone wishes to speak in favor, opposed? See, no interest, and I declare the public hearing closed, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass.
Second.
Second, any objections? See, no so move. All right, this call, go over to the, uh, city council, acting as successor agencies of the dissolved community development commission, the courts of officers, uh, which is the SA one, uh, repeal sales tax ordinance, staff, so what we're doing here? This is, this is, go ahead, okay, go ahead.
Everybody.
Thanks, sir, right, thank you.
Yes, uh, in May, we completed the, uh, refunding of, of the Cora scanning successor agency bonds, which will provide, uh, about four million saves, and at the same time, if you, uh, provide, I mean, four hundred thousand dollars sales tax, we allocate back to the city general fund. Uh, before this settlement, uh, we require to, uh, repeal the former Ball Park Development Agency ordinance number one. And staff recommend that the successor agency introduce for first duty ordinance number two, entitle the ordinance of the successor agency to the, the soft community development commission of the city of Ball Park, repealing ordinance number one regarding sales and lease taxes. Uh, do you like me to go further and give more details?
No, I think that's about it, pretty much, you're good.
But basically, we, we, uh, we repeal the ordinance number one from the former successor agency to allow the sales tax to be allocated back to the general fund, uh, after we complete the refunding of the outstanding for successor agency bonds.
I have a question.
Okay, up, go, yes.
Uh, do you know how much, approximately how much money that will be, or do you have that calculated yet?
Uh, yes, the, uh, sales tax is from, uh, funding a set project area. Previously, when we first issued the ordinance number one, and it allowed the sales tax generated from that project area to repay the, uh, tax revenue fund from the successor agency, but after the, the solution and we refunding the bond, we no longer require to pay the sales tax to pay the successor agency bonds, and so the sales tax generated in that project area is about, it will be over four hundred thousand dollars per year, so which means for long term, we will receiving about four hundred, uh, over, it will be over four hundred thousand dollars, maybe down the road can be five hundred thousand dollars per year back to the general fund.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, so at this point, I'll make a motion, uh, that we, uh, introduce the first reading of the ordinance number two, entitled ordinance of the successor agency to the, to dissolve, to, to that dissolve, uh, community development commission of the city of Ball Park, uh, repealing ordinance number one, refunding sales and new taxes, that is my motion.
Second.
Second, this is second by Councilmember Luza, any objections? See, no so move. Item fourteen, which is a request for directions from the city council regarding existing on-call professional services for the public works department and community development department. At this point, uh, you know what, I was reading this earlier, so, basically, we're seeing here that we take it out to staff, uh, for an R F Q, and then, so, so we're talking, so this is in a go-out for an R F Q, and then extend existing, uh, on-call professional listing, uh, until, uh, June thirtieth, and am I being supportive of this?
I'll second.
Makes sense, because we're gonna obviously bring in different companies, right?
Yes, you got dynamite, Roman.
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll support it, and then, I guess, and then also extend, in other words, extend, their, their, extend their current consultants until such time that we, we, uh, come up with an R F Q, is that okay? So I'll make a motion.
You said to extend it to twenty nineteen?
For June twenty nineteen.
Correct.
Oh, oh.
See, that's two years away.
Is that fair?
And I think he was looking at the recommendation one, which is to do the R F Q and then extend it...
Until we fill that...
All right, okay, so we'll say twenty eighteen.
Or the other option would be to extend it for two years, so there's these two options.
Also, I see.
No, one specifically says until the R F Q goes out and we find a qualified candidate, correct?
Okay.
So it could be three months, six months, whatever it is.
All right, so, I'm there, I guess, I guess I understand, we have two options, one is, uh, I can tell
that we're doing the R F Q, and we can currently, oh, extend the existing on-call professional list until the R F Q process is done, or we could keep the on-call professional listing until June thirty twenty nineteen, basic center for two years.
I would like for you to go out to R F Q, um, you know, to make it a thorough process.
I will second that.
Okay, was there a motion first?
You made a motion for the first R F Q.
Yeah, okay, hold on, hold on, let's go back. Okay, so at this point, so we're considering, we could potentially consider both one and two, am I correct?
Oh, yeah, okay.
You're considering whether you want to pick one or two.
Yeah.
Well, the two are inconsistent in charge.
Okay, Councilmember DeGallo, did you make a motion?
No, you did it.
Okay, the one?
Okay, well, I think, I, I, I just, we already talked aside, but I would go with the two-year extension was to keep, no, no, with that R F Qs to continue to keep the same, group, the same, the same listing.
So, okay, that's a, that's a motion for item number two, am I correct?
I see, we only have to follow his motion first, because he made a motion...
Let me, let me, let me, I'll drop my motion, I'll drop my motion. Councilmember DeGallo Pacheco, uh, made a motion for item two, which is extending existing on-call professional listing, listing, listing until June thirtieth twenty nineteen, and additional two years, so, uh, my motion, I'll say yes.
I would like to make an amended motion to, uh, go with the R F Q, I mean, we have a lot of work that's been given to our company, and if they're the most qualified, so be it, but I think we need to put it out, I mean, that's what we do in cities, to make sure that we have the most qualified, it's the least expensive, and I think we would be doing our city a disservice, and we just keep just, you know, getting these contracts without seeing what's out there, so I think, I strongly urge us to at least give others the opportunity, and again, if they're the, you know, the least expensive, then the more qualified, so be it, but I think that's a fair process.
And so is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there second? Okay, well, we're going to two, two here, so.
Two motion, so you have to go on the other.
Okay, all right, so at this point, let's go amend the, uh, city treasurer's decision first. Yes, we're gonna go ahead and start with, uh, with Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio. Now, let me, let me, let me just say this conversation, oh, this we got to share, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead with the motion that was proposed, uh, by, amended, proposed by Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, and that is, uh, to go for an R F Q, which is item number one, to stay prepared and circulate an updated, uh, request for qualification, R F Q for general on-call professional consulting services for the area noted above, and extend the existing on-call professional listing until such time the R F Q process is complete, and a new listing for an on-call professional service, services is established. All right, so at this point, that is, that is the motion for her to amend it, and at this point, Madam City Treasurer...
That's Mayor Susan Rubio?
Yes.
That's a member of Luza?
Yes.
That's a member of Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Manu Rosario?
No, so we appear to be at an impasse on this particular one, so we're gonna go ahead and second the, the second motion, uh, by Councilmember DeGallo Pacheco, item number two, which is extend, extend the existing on-call professional listing, uh, until June thirtieth twenty nineteen, and additional two years, and I second it, so at this point, um, our city treasurer, my name is...
That's a member of Ricardo Pacheco?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Manu Rosario?
Yes.
That's a member of Luza? No, because according to the way this reads, I would take the contract to twenty twenty-one, because it says twenty nineteen and two additional years, which the contract would be clear out to twenty twenty-one, so no.
And so the motion is not...
Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to also speak with strong opposition, I mean, I think it's just, uh, redeeming the service, it is to me irresponsible to just keep going this contract without seeing if they're the most qualified at this time, and if it's expensive, and I think that's what, you know, we were just talking about the budget last night, how we are waiting to, to trouble future, and how we need to be very closely responsible, and just to do this going, I think really sets a bad precedent, and I think that would really need to be considered, this involves four years, so I need to give it a second look, especially because also the contracts are going for, uh, public works and community development, I mean, there's a lot of companies out there, and I'm not saying they're not the ones that we're gonna get ultimately, but I think we need to look at that, like, we're acting like this other company is not, I think that's irresponsible. Mayor, I think we really need to consider, especially given the fact that we're getting to a high budget about how we need to read up every dollar, so I will, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanna, uh, uh, say that they have been, uh, a company that's been responsible, and have a major experience in this particular area, and of course, at this point, right now, they've been an asset versus we don't have an actual engineer, uh, as a part of the city Ball Park, and, and tonight was, uh, a good example that we hadn't put forward around some of the projects that we've been delaying, so, at this point, Madam City...
I'm just saying, they're saying, you know, they, you know, they're doing us a favor, at least that we have on this, because that's the only company we hire, because there's no other companies we can hire, so I'm just saying, for the record, I think they're qualified, and I think they're doing a great job, this is not a matter of service, and what they've done to our community, because I'm not trying to say they're not, it's a company, I'm just saying that we need to have their process, and make sure that we are getting the best, uh, you know, contract for our city right now, that we're, we're going to some financial deficits in the future, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? All right, thank you, Councilmember DeGallo Pacheco?
Yeah, I think, I mean, all, all these companies, we're talking about different companies that are on this, um, uh, on the on-call list, uh, remember Strong Companies, Vanair, and different ones, also the, uh, uh, the A A E, the infrastructure engineer firm, uh, is actually selected by the South Almonte City Council after they terminated their contract with the existing firm that was there, uh, and then they selected a new firm, they have to pay the E, so I think that's a good firm, also in Montebello, they happened to be, uh, they were selected in the same process, we can do also. Uh, my point is, I, I would like to see you continue the, uh, the efforts that they're going to do for public works, these one, uh, positive, I think, with all the different companies that we have here on the on-call list, so that, but, let me make this motion, just to see if...
Uh, Councilmember Pacheco, can I make a common clarification before you do your motion? It was brought up that, uh, the agenda says, and an additional two years, which made it appear as though this contract is gonna be extended to June thirtieth two thousand twenty-one, because that's exactly what it says, however, this is a typographical error, and, uh, I wanna thank my reader critics for bringing this to my attention, um, this is a typographical error, they're asking to extend the contract from June two thousand seventeen to June two thousand nineteen, and additional two years, A N, not and, A N D, so this is a typographical error, it should say and additional two years, which means that you're extending the contract for two years, not four years, so that, just so that everybody's clear about what that is, it's not four years, it's two years.
Well, you know what, let me, let me just say this, okay, so, at this point, we're gonna be here all night, what I'll do, let me go ahead and change, I'll go ahead, and just send it out for R F Q, that's what I'll do, because it's not, we're gonna be here all night, so, I'll go ahead and, and, and make a...
I'll circle it.
Make, make a motion, uh, for, okay, make a motion to prepare and circulate the updated request for qualification, R F Q for the general on-call professional consulting services for the areas noted above, and extend existing on-call professional listings until such time that the R F Q process is complete, and a new listing for all call professional services, that is my motion, they say, my Councilmember.
Hold on, I might go, uh, a little bit, just a second. Okay, but, um, because it did say two, you know, this, well, it's not four years, it's two years, so would, would council consider doing an extension for two years?
No, I think they should go out to R F Q now, I mean, if they're the best people, thank you, Mayor, for, for thinking that over, um, you know, I think that if, so be it, if they happen to win the R F Q, but I think that in good faith, and also to our residents and so forth, I think that we need to, we need to put it out there.
I'm sorry, but, but it's, it's not just one product in particular, it's an on-call for the whole list. Do you keep your word to one firm or which one?
No, no, all of them, everybody, all of them. I'm sorry, all of them. I should have clarified that.
So, so, so at this point, the, the motion, I made the motion, the second, my customer, Pacheco,
there was no, any objections? Hello?
No.
Okay, no objection, alright. So at this point.
It's for RFQ, right?
Yes, it's gonna go RFQ, which is number one. Alright, so at this point, we'll go to item fifteen, which is the fiscal year 2017, 2018, Community Development Block Run, City of Ying and the Home Investment Partnership, Run Home Annual Action Plan.
As always, unusually last, and I try to make it short and sweet. This is.
Thank you for that. Thank you for waiting.
That's okay. This is the same patterns represented twice in the public hearings. None of the comments have been received. We are still waiting for final HUD allocations, but, of course, city and home that have not yet been announced. Once they're announced, if they make a drastic reduction, I will be here, again, presenting this to you because we do have 60 days after the announcement. So right now, what you do is report to the draft based on last year's numbers. Or prove in justice on last year's numbers. So do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Do you need a motion for it?
Thank you.
Do you need a motion there? Alright, just, just information, alright. Okay, so then we'll go over to item.
I'm not actually pleased to approve.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, we already.
Oh, you approve it?
Then go ahead and make your motion. This motion by Vice Mayor, by Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, second, I'll put on second. Any objections? See no vote. Alright, so now we'll go over to the reports of officers, request by Mayor Manuel Rosano. I am, I am dropping this particular subject, so I'm not, I'm not going further than that. Alright, so, and then, real quick, before we close up, I want to ask, we have one other. Two?
That's the agenda item that we've added as an emergency.
Oh, definitely. I'm gonna make a motion to pass, it's important, because my Vice Mayor Susan Rubio brought that up and it's extremely important that we all jump on board.
No, especially because it was an item I can last year.
Yes, thank you.
This one in particular is an item in response to President Donald Trump announcing that he was moving from the Paris Climate Agreement. And that is something that's really important. And I think that we need to send a really strong message to, to our president. And he does it to the cycle of the entire nation. And so what this does, this resolution commits Ballen Park to honor the Paris Agreement regardless of his actions. And of course, it's just, it's a statement only. And that means that Ballen Park is committed to continuing all our efforts to reduce around greenhouse gases, but also working with our neighboring cities. We have to be more mindful now more than ever that we need to collaborate and find solutions and continue those efforts. But I, and I just want to make sure that people know that Ballen Park denounced its actions and we stand very firmly with other cities and other, you know, leaders that are denouncing those actions as well. So with that, Mayor, I really would like for us to have this on record, the resolution that we continue to support the Paris Agreement to the end of the year.
Absolutely, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, any objections? See no vote. Alright, so let me, before we close up the City Council, two things. Monica's request, I'm dumping, I'm dumping my request on there, okay? And then, yeah, this is going to be, two things that, the, because I want to make sure we look at the street light on Howard Drive, on Main Howard in Ohio. When they're coming out from North Park, it literally takes maybe three, four, five more minutes. So vehicles are just, you know, tired, some of them going right across that red line. Okay, so we could please check that. This is, that's very important, I appreciate that. Want to also thank the police department, because I know in the case I called about, some of the homeless over at Walmart. One of them always got hit this past Sunday, and someone went out there and they tripped the ones off by, by, by target. Because, you know, they're endangering themselves as well, so we could continue that, I appreciate that. Second, one off the City Council, there's a residence, yes, there's a lot, a lot of residents here that are from Zacatecas, and they want to port a sister city, but they want to do it independent. Because I told them, they're independent, that the city would not provide any type of funds, maybe a system or some facility for not, think lawn or something? I can't pronounce.
I can like that.
Okay, so I told them that, I would, would we be in support of that?
Yes, I know what ambition there.
Yes.
I don't want to hear Tom or asshole.
Oh my God, that's it. I don't say anything about that. So what they're gonna do, the, the mayor wants to come and visit in particular, and I just told them that we'd check. So at this point, can we get?
No, the way it works is that, yeah, we can have.
They're gonna do it independent.
No, no, and we could have multiple cities, that there's no limit, like we sound like we have five, I think, in different countries. Yeah, there's no limit.
So I asked them just to have the mayor send whatever type of paperwork here, but I made it clear to them that they would have to fundraise, and then, I guess they're one of the biggest fundraisers in Ball Park. I didn't know that, that they would do their own things independently. So we'll put that on the agenda, so we can get an official approval, then I guess the mayor or the group want to come out here as well, kind of visit. Alright, alright, thank you very much. At this point, that's the only thing I have to say. Customer members have anything else? If not, at this point.
You know, we're beginning to say Happy Father's Day. I'm sure there's a lot of fathers missing, you know, to honor our mothers. But I know it's this coming weekend, so.
No, it's the 18th.
Oh, it's the 18th.
Well, this father needs to be said, because he does.
Someone make a motion for German.
Second.
Any objections? Viva, viva Ballen Park. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Gustavo? Thanks, sir.
Let him celebrate.
I'm gonna let him celebrate.
Okay.